We're gonna wait for Newton to join us. He stepped out just a second.
Okay.
Thanks, John. It's so nice to have you aboard. Is that who you are?
I think. I'm not. I'm in cognitive. Uh, it's a decision. Big overdone. You're studying. Yes, I am.
I'm sorry. It seems Bruce helped me here, but it's not. Is that the third item?
Yeah, we get, we're upstairs. I gave it to him. To Jim Hattman. Yes, sir. Yeah, but we ran out of copies. And we had to run upstairs in the meeting fixing the star.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Oh, I was looking at. I'm sorry. I was looking at the fourth one. I need my gavel. That's all. I can't hear me tapping on the microphone. Okay, good evening. Good evening. It's time to get started. I don't, I don't doubt that. Okay, it's six o'clock after, so we need to get started.
John, the mic's not on.
Yeah, it's on. Just not very much. Okay, it looks like we've got a good crowd here tonight. I would ask you to go ahead and silence your cellphones at this time. When we get into calling the people to speak, everyone is welcome to speak as long as you have something fresh and new. As different ones get up and make the point about what they don't like and what they see as being a problem, you can say amen or whatever. We don't need to hear it 50 times. So if you've got something fresh to say, by all means, come up to the microphone and we will, we will hear what you have to say. The first application on the agenda tonight is application 2211Z, 585 Spalding Investments LLC owners, 35 South McDonough Road, approximately 208.99 acres located in Land Lot 14 of the Third Land District. This applicant requests rezoning from AR1 Agricultural and Residential to C2 Manufacturing. And I'm gonna see, is Jeff Herman here tonight? If you'll come out and state your name and address for the record and tell us a little bit about your project.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Herman. I'm one of the partners and the applicant for the rezoning of our property. This is part of a 400 acre piece. I'm sorry, the address is 2130 Canton View, Alpharetta, Georgia. This property, it's, it's about 170 acres of a 400 acre piece. We rezoned 230 acres of it for industrial use already. And this is the balance of it. We were working, and we are working with the Spalding County Industrial Authority and David Lucky over there. This is the balance of it. It's pretty much in, this part of it's pretty much an extension of the industrial park. And I can answer any questions for you, but, you know, it kind of fits in there. It was in the long term. It's always, it's been in the long term future plan use as industrial. And we feel that's really the best use for it right now. Everything around it right now, three sides of it is industrial.
Okay. Mr. Harris, you have any comments?
Question at the present time.
Okay, Mr. Adams?
Have you, have you read the conditions as proposed by staff?
Were they?
I have.
Were you able to get him a staff report?
Were they similar to the other conditions? Is that what it was? Are they the same conditions as the other ones? If they were the same conditions as when we rezoned the other 230, we're fine with all that.
Bruce?
Nothing at this time.
Jeff, you might want to look at them.
Yeah, just look at them.
Okay.
Okay, just sit tight.
You want me to do that while you're hearing? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Newton, do you think it would be better to hear the public comments before we hear the staff report? Okay, here we go. I have Deana Ray, 73 Parham Road.
Hi, my name is Deana Ray and I reside at 73 Parham Road. I'm here tonight on behalf of the family of Jeff Grant and the Permot family that reside on Wild Plum Road, and they wrote a letter for me to read for them. Most of the members of their family are unable to attend the meeting tonight because of them being elderly and out of town or working. They are actually speaking in opposition. Please do not approve the proposed site plan for this property bordered by Arthur K. Bolton Parkway, South McDonough Road and Wild Plum Road. Our family owns the property on the other side of Wild Plum Road. We firmly believe the proposed building that lies parallel to Wild Plum Road will cause unwanted noise pollution and air pollution from the big trucks going in and out and sitting idling as they typically do at such warehouses. This will have a negative impact on our quiet, peaceful property and we use, that we use and enjoy. Our family members living on the road will surely be affected by the noises that are associated with this type of warehouse. Noises, noises such as forklifts beeping, loud speakers, truck backup alarms and engines continually running. This will cause economic obsolescence to all of our properties. We don't want that building there at all. But if you choose to allow it, please minimize the conditions. We are asking for the buffers zone to be greatly increased, not only leaving the natural buffer zone along Wild Plum Road, but also make sure that they are, have a well landscaped and increased height berm type buffer behind their planned building. We know there's a moratorium going on right now. We just ask you to, you know, look at some of these residents' concerns and take that into consideration. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next person I have signed up is Kay Wimpy.
Hi, I'm Kay Wimpy. I live at 164 South Walkers Mill Road. I am asking that you not approve this request. One, why was not this additional property added in the original request that was brought before this board? So why are they bringing it now? There are 14 other commercial buildings that have been approved in this area that are with one square mile of all this property. Trucks will be using McDonough Road that you already approved that is a county road, not maintained by the state. And unfortunately, the county doesn't maintain any of its county roads. Trucks will be parking on McDonough Road. They will be parking on Wild Plum Road that is going to disturb the people living on Wild Plum Road. They will also be parking all along Arthur K. Bolton. We have to stop the encroachment of industrial because if you do this one, then the next piece of property, well, it almost touches this piece of property. So let's just go ahead and make it industrial. We need to keep it within what the limits are, and this is not an industrial piece of property. Thank you.
Okay, I have Tommy Bowden.
My name's Tommy Bowden. I live at 665 South McDonough Road on the corner of Cathy Lane and South McDonough. I spoke with the gentleman here last month about this piece of property. Have you got a laser pointer? I can borrow him. I don't know if you can see it or not. But anyway, the exits and the entrances, they had them coming in and off of South McDonough Road. Just like the previous speaker said, this is a county maintained road, and it's not very well maintained as it is. The secondary exit for the other building, I've already looked at it because I have a copy of the drawing and the measurements. The second entrance and exit is gonna be right over a hill crest. And I can assure you, with the way the drivers drive on South McDonough Road, that will be a death trap. Not only for people entering and leaving the business, but also the people on South McDonough Road. When I, when I spoke to the gentleman last month, he made a comment about the marshland, that they could not do anything with the marshland to take and allow the traffic to enter and exit in the industrial park where it should be. Clayton County Fire Department built Station 1 on a flood plain adjacent to Flint River. Southern Regional Medical Center built a parking lot for employees and patients on the flood plain next to Flint River. They can do the same thing and prevent the traffic from being dumped out on South McDonough Road. Yes, it's gonna cost them more, but let's face it, they're gonna make a killing anyway off of the rent and the sale of the business. Do we even know what's going into this warehouse? Do we really know? Is it gonna be hazardous materials? Is it gonna be textile? What's going in here? You've got to look at that. If it's gonna be hazardous materials, it's not gonna be a good, good thing when it goes to leaking. So I'm asking you, stop it. The, the fire service in this county is not equipped, nor is it able to handle a massive chemical spill. We don't need that. And it's, it's your place to look out for the citizens.
Thank you. Okay, that's all that is signed up on this particular signup sheet. So at this time, we'll hear the staff report.
All right, so, good afternoon, Commission. As it was stated before, applicant is requesting to rezon this property from agricultural residential to C2. The proposed office, they're proposing to do an office industrial warehouse, which is permitted use within C2. The future land use map slash comprehensive plan identify this property for future development as employment activity center. The employment character areas chara- 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 characitized by its major roadway that has potential to accommodate high quality industrial growth. This did trigger a development of regional impact or a DRI. They have received the report and it has been, and it's being reviewed as we speak. The, the application does not comply with the following subsections of a traffic study, so that is gonna be one of the conditions that we are imposing. It does have a condition of approval with, with seven conditions, and I can go through those if you would like.
Ms. Morales, you, you did say that the traffic study has been put in gear. Is that what you?
No, sir. It has not been put in gear. So that's one of the conditions that we are requesting. A preparation of a traffic study required by the UDO Section 2205.
I, I just thought I heard you say it had been started. Okay.
John, the DRI should have been submitted when the application came in along with the request for the traffic study and the written letter, the written intent, plan of intent. Those were not. I'm sorry. I said the DRI report should have been tendered to Three Rivers when the application came in, as well as the traffic study, which is set out in the written plan of intent in Sections 2205, C4 and C5. That is not the fault of the developer.
Correct.
And then it was, the application was allowed to proceed, so we have asked them to go back and pick back up to make certain that those sections are the subject of compliance. So therefore, you see the conditions that are there, which are tied to filling in information that had not been identified to the applicant at the time it came in. Excuse me. And giving them time to get that completed before this goes to the Board of Commissions.
Okay. Mr. Herman, did you, have you, have you looked over the?
I have, and I'm fine with all the conditions, yeah.
All right. Okay, Frank, back, do you have any question?
Yeah, what's going in this building?
Well, this is a master plan development, so we're actually rebuilding too. It's not like we have a bunch of spec buildings we're building there. So we're working with the Spalding County, you know, Industrial Authority and kind of staying up to their levels and everything else. So we'll vet out who's gonna be there and then work out a deal with them and develop too. It's not like we're gonna have all these spec buildings and we're worried about having to lease them up and everything else. So we're gonna try and pick and choose, you know, our tenants. And so it's, it's an industrial area. It's owned for industrial. So we're trying to bring, you know, the manufacturing and the distribution use over there.
All right, now, do you, do you speculate on this building being more distribution than manufacturing?
It's, it's what the market is. We're still gonna look at the intended use and make sure whatever it is that.
I need, I need a yes or no answer out of that.
It's gonna be both manufacturing and distribution. Right now, there's more need for distribution than there is manufacturing. But, and what that manufacturing would be, you know, we, you know, we are working with David, you know, Lucky, and, and we're working with the area. And so it's not our intent to, you know, try and go after something. It's not, it's gonna be a problem because it's gonna be a problem for us too.
Well, the traffic is gonna be a problem. And this particular, these buildings, we are nearing 2 million square feet. And we've got, well, pretty close to 500 parking spaces, maybe more than that in the ones that we've done. These people that have assembled here tonight are concerned, as I am, about what these trucks gonna do. And I had a truck driver a month or so ago say, hey, I've been driving trucks all my life and I'm gonna park pretty well where I damn want to.
Well, and so for the buildings, I mean, this is a covenants building and everything else. But to answer your question is, there's not gonna be any parking on Arthur Bolton Parkway. Plum Road is bordered by us. We have no intention, and you can close the road, you know, just let it be for the residents or whatever. We have no intention of using. I mean, not, what's that? I mean Plum Road is the, can you pull that? Can we pull up the, can you pull up the, the map again? That, and I'll show you.
That would destroy some real concerns if you were.
There we go. So Wild Plum Road actually goes from the industrial park to Hilton Don. We have no intent of actually touching in. This is a hundred foot buffer there, and we have no intent, there's no reason for us to even use this road. The two entrances, one entrance will be here and one entrance will be before you get to Wild Plum over on this side. And all the traffic, there's no reason for any truck traffic should be coming out, just, just by flow should be coming out of Harvard Bolton and then turning back into Harvard Bolton. There's no reason for traffic to really go this way. As far as the entrances, the two entrances, we'll work, we're gonna work with the city. If there's a, is there a site problem or anything else? We'll figure it out with them. And we're not trying to do anything unsafe. Now, this is just a projection based on what engineers laid out the property, but if there's something, it's a blind site and everything, we planned it with, you know, the city or the county and everything else that we would need to do, you know, to make sure it's least hazardous possible. And the parking, there won't be any parking here in the Harvard Bolton, can't be parking. So all the traffic or trucks should be in there. There is, you know, there is a lot of parking. And if someone comes in and needs more parking.
Okay, I was just gonna point out the entrances, but I was pointing them out earlier.
Well, he just pointed them out.
Can I?
Go ahead, Mary.
Have you considered if the traffic study that comes back suggests widening the road, the South McDonough Road, all the way down to the second entrance, as you propose it, is that something you have in your plans or the ability to do?
If something is needed for all this and everything else, because we know we're gonna, I mean, the road is, and we haven't even been there yet, and the road has, not issues, but it needs some maintenance and everything else, just like it does further down, but we want, yeah, we, we're expecting to probably work, it's, work with the, the county and the city to figure out something on there. And if, if it comes back that we have to widen it a little bit or do whatever in there, we're willing to work with them and figure that out.
All right, Nick, do you have anything? Nick?
Yeah, it appears to me that you need to have a good neighbor policy here, and it appears that coming off of Wild Plum Road and the other exits, or the, any other exit that might come about, why not just make them all on and off Arthur K. Bolton Parkway?
You won't let me do that.
Mr. Allen, that's, that's not permitted under the ordinance.
It's not permitted, okay.
And, and the reason is because it's limited access under DOT rules, and we do not allow additional curb cuts in order to avoid having, having multiple locations where we do that, the ordinance does that in order to avoid having multiple locations where people can come in and out. We don't want it to be like 1941.
Okay. Mary Louise, do you have anything else?
No, that's, that, the, the concern of the, of the community as well as the development, the scope of the development raised concern, as far as I was concerned, with the size of the South McDonough Road past the initial entrance, and, and I would very much like to see a cooperation by the applicant to improve that road so as to reduce any additional traffic concerns or safety.
Okay, very good. Ruth?
Um, yeah, just a, a couple of things. Again, we, we talked about this several times, and I know this is all part of it, but sometimes we get sidetracked in looking at the details and stuff, and, and sometimes kinda skip over some of the details of the overlay and stuff, but there's some very specific details and information in the overlay about trees, about the setbacks and all that stuff, that regardless of what may be shown here, if there's anything in discrepancy, has gotta meet the guidelines. And, and it's very important that, that we ensure that that happens. Now, I see it here in the comments, under the conditional approval, that one of talks about the 100-foot setback shown on the zoning plan identified in Condition D above shall be either left as an undisturbed buffer or a planted buffer. But then, I see along South McDonough, you're actually showing a 70-foot buffer on this drawing here. So what, which is, and I, and I'm not exactly sure if the 70 kinda works with that ordinance in the overlay anyway, so what, are we talking about moving all of those to 100-foot setbacks around the whole site?
The, the, it shows on the plan, the South McDonough we're gonna be working with, because basically, and that's a, that's, I believe that's a whole building setback, that's, that would be landscape and everything else. There's, there's a large overlay district piece, there's art, the parallel art, it's called Parkway.
Right.
We're comfortable with all that, and that actually, that, that all, that really addresses the, I believe that addresses the previous only we do, but since this is contiguous with the Hilton Don, that's...
Okay.
So really, the 100-foot is really the one backing up the Wild Plum Road, which, you know, we have no problem with the, you know, the 100-foot right there. We wanna make this road, obviously, since we're gonna own both sides of South McDonough up to Wild Plum, obviously wanna make that look good, so it will be landscaped and everything else. As far as, you know, whether it's disturbed or replanted, it will, we have no problem with that, but we're gonna, this is setback 300, the relative first one, so yes, answer your question.
Right. Okay. All right, and, and again, I know in the previous portion of it that was approved, and, you know, we have, do have a very successful and well-planned-out industrial park out there currently.
Yes.
And it was my understanding that your efforts were gonna continue to maintain the guidelines and the requirements that were, were in that industrial park under original. Is that correct?
Yeah, just like before, we're gonna try and, and what it is, is, and this is dealing with David Lucky, who actually came up with the guidelines.
Right.
We've had several meetings with him, and he's got several points, and he tries to get a percentage of those points in when he's reviewing people. Some people might do one thing, some might do another, but it's a certain percentage of the points he tries to get in, and we're gonna try and do that too with him.
Right.
He knows we're working with him.
But, but that's what I'm saying, this, this portion of the property, what we're looking at tonight, is gonna abide by those same guidelines?
Yes, that a portion of them are, will be, you know what I mean, we're not gonna be abiding by his guidelines, but we're gonna take his guidelines and say, okay, this is what we're, and he's working with us, trying to get, you know, people to, that yes, I guess to answer your question, we're gonna go kind of under his same routine, that if there's 50, you know, 50 or 40 guidelines, that you try and get at least 20 of those in how it's built and everything else.
Okay. So with the discussions with Mr. Lucky, do we have anything kind of laid out, any specifics to what we're looking at with that?
No.
Okay.
I mean, he told us what his specifics are, and he's actually helping us, you know, he'll be helping us market. He wants to get our stuff, and since the authority is, you know, the first people, people call, looking around, they call the Industrial Authority in the Green Valley, and that's kind of our intent, is to work with him, so he can tell people, hey, if you want an X number building, you know what I mean, then we can do it here, and then he'll call us up and we'll get with the people and try and design it and everything else. So he'll, he'll be vetting out people too and everything else.
Okay. That's all I have, sir.
Okay. What, I know we're kinda have set you back a little bit with not following through. Is your timetable gonna move forward based on the approvals that you get, or?
Yes, we plan on, yes, we're ready to start.
All right. That's all I have.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, gentlemen and ladies, no other discussion. We entertain a motion.
Okay, sir, to move this along and to, oh, for any other additional questions or whatever, I'll go ahead and make a motion to recommend conditional approval based on the guidelines that have been discussed tonight and what's been told by the applicant.
Okay, that's the bullet points A through G on the staff report?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have a motion for conditional approval with the bullet points A through G that are on the staff report recommended.
I'll second that motion.
I have a second. Okay. Those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, it's 3-2.
This goes to the Board of Commissioners.
Yeah, this will go to the Board of Commissioners on May, March 23rd.
March 23rd, I believe.
Mm-hmm. March 23rd at 6 o'clock.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, next application on the agenda is Application 2302Z. Chad L. Ammon, a successor trustee to the Cliff Scott Children's Trust owner, Stephen L. Jones Esquire agent, 1015 and 1079 Rehoboth Church Road and Zero Dickerson Road, approximately 367 acres located in land lots 74, 75, 86, and 87 of the third land district. The applicant, the applicant is requesting rezoning from AR1 agricultural and residential to R1, single-family residential low-density to allow for a traditional design special exception subdivision. And, do we have someone here to represent that? Name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, my name is Joshua Williams. The address is 1600 Parkwood Circle, Atlanta, Georgia, 303, 30308. I'm an attorney with Taylor English Duma.
Josh, pull the microphone down.
Here we go. Can you hear me? Oh, that's much better. I'm an attorney with Taylor English Duma, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I'm being accompanied by Ms. Lisa Amy, who's the, who's the manager of the project on behalf of the applicant. I had a PowerPoint. Is this a laser? Can I control it with this, or do I?
Josh, before you get started, so we can make it clear, particularly Ms. Upshaw, who's a brand-new member, the only thing before you tonight is the rezoning application. The special exception has to go to the Board of Appeals for review and recommendation for the, for a special exception subdivision. So, the discussion tonight is just rezoning from AR1 to R1. And then we will be back on March the 8th with the Board of Appeals to discuss the special exception.
Thank you. If you can go to the first slide. All right. So, the property here, it consists of three lots. The, the three lots are approximately 367.52 acres, and our proposal is to develop a traditional design subdivision with 179 lots. Each lot being approximately 1.34 acres, and then we'll have 127.2 acres of open space. If you were to take those 179 acres and divide it by 367, the development as a whole will have a density of 2.05 lot, acres per lot. You can go to the next. All right. We, we would like to point out, there is a development trend in the area. As you'll see through, throughout the, is this little laser pointer working? Here we go. There we go. As you'll see throughout this map, there are a plethora of one-acre to two-acre lots. Just to point out a few, to the west of the property, my laser pointer doesn't seem to be working, right here, we have several one-acre lots off, in Crystal Water. To the south of the property, right around here, we have one-acre lots off Chapel Mill Directly above the property off Dickerson Road, we have two-acre lots, and then we have one-acre lots off Fambro Circle over here, and we also have one-acre lots over here off of Sarah Lane. And, and that's just five examples out of hundreds and hundreds of one, one to two-acre lots throughout the area. So what we're, what we're asking is not inconsistent with...
Hold on, just, hold on just a minute, sir. It's only fair that he gets a fair opportunity to talk, okay? Your, your time is coming, just hold on.
What we're asking is consistent with the development trend of the area. If we can go to the next slide. All right, that's just slide, just zoomed in, showing these two-acre lots up here. We've got one-acre lots, it's not on here, and then we have one-acre lots, one to two-acre lots over here. Can we go to the next slide, please? And so the, the entire area is zoned AR1 agricultural residential, and our proposal is to rezone it to R1 residential. Can we go to the next slide, please? All right. So this is, this is what the, what, what the development is going to look like. Again, 367 acres, that's a density of two, two acres, that should be two, two acres per lot, as a whole, with 179 units, with the average lot size of 1.34. Again, we're gonna have open space of 127.2 acres. We are proposing three entrances. This project will be in two phases. Phase one will be, this thing's not working. I'm just gonna walk up here, if you don't mind. So, phase one is gonna be everything below this dotted line, and phase two is gonna be everything above that dotted line. Phase one will be, our first phase will be 94 lots, and the second phase would be 85 lots. There'll be two entrances, or I'm sorry, three entrances. In phase one, we'll have an entrance to the south of the property off, off Rehoboth Church Road, and then also to the west of the property, and then to the north of the property, we'll have an entrance off of Dickerson Road. Can we go to the next slide, please? All right. Okay, so, the, as I've mentioned a few times, the, we'll have 127 acres of open space. We're gonna have casaeos, all this area here, there'll be walking trails, park benches. Can we go to the next slide? Okay. And then, we'll, we'll also have walking trails along Buck Creek. All right, go to the next slide, please. All right. So again, the current zoning is AR1 agricultural. The land is undeveloped and vacant as is presently zoned, and we are proposing R1 single-family residential low-density, which is two acres per lot. As we've mentioned, we are asking for a special exemption, which will be in March, which will, which if approved, would allow us to have 1.34 acre lots. If you can skip, then go to the next slide. Yes. All right, so these, the, we, we have five different types of housing that we're proposing. These are two of them. Go to the next slide, and these, these are the others. And that is all I have for you. 2,000 square feet. AR is currently 1,500 square feet. Two, two stories. That is all I have. If you have any questions?
Just sit tight.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, the first person signed up to speak is Deana Ray, is this correct?
Well, here I am again. I am in opposition of everything this developer just said. Number one, we are concerned about the roads. Who in the world's gonna upkeep all the roads for this 193 housing?
Ms. Ray, Ms. Ray, Ms. Ray.
Ms. Ray, for purposes of this case, could you state your address?
My name is Deana Ray, and I reside at 73 Parham Road here in Griffin, Georgia. The first thing I want to talk about is, this development goes against your vision statement. On page 15 of your comprehensive plan, it states that you will protect the rural charm that makes our community unique. What the hell is gonna make this unique anymore? Okay? On number two, the future development map, it shows this area as a rural community and...
Okay, the first person signed up to speak is Deana Ray, is this correct?
Well, here I am again. I am in opposition of everything this developer just said. Number one, we are concerned about the roads. Who in the world is going to upkeep all the roads for this 193-foot housing?
Ms. Ray. Ms. Ray.
Ms. Ray, for purposes of this case, could you state your address?
My name is Deana Ray, and I reside at 73 Parham Road here in Griffin, Georgia. The first thing I want to talk about is, this development goes against your vision statement. On page 15 of your comprehensive plan, it states that you will protect the rural charm that makes our community unique. What the hell is going to make this unique anymore? Okay? On number two, the future development map, it shows this area as a rural community and rural neighborhood area, which states larger lot sizes are encouraged, but should be no less than three acres. Okay? And it states, "The reduction in single-family lot sizes through the special exemption process is inconsistent with the intent of these areas." And you can see that in your comprehensive plan. We see that you're not making these decisions on the best interest of this community. We've been fighting the Tamachichi Project, the McDonough Project, and the High Falls Road Project, and nothing has come out for the residents. So, we just would like to see y'all make some changes in this community. Thank you.
Joe Beal.
Good evening, I'm Joe Beal, 614 Swinton Road. Been engaged and active on the Tamachichi Project, South McDonough, with my fellow citizens. The community's learned to accept the process the way it is, and understand what the rules and guidelines that have been set forth for the future land use. The future planning map that goes out to 2042, Section 33, page 38 of that. We accept the fact that there has to be negotiations in the areas, where even if poorly communicated in the past, that zoning has been established that needs to be done for the county. You're now in a position with this particular attempt to rezone, where you have to back up what you've been telling us for nine months. This was the plan. Your plan for everything from Orchard Hill to Butts County Line. Everything south of the 16 Economic Development Area, which is now highlighted and displayed properly, thank you very much. That is all rural agricultural land. They have the land, they can use it, but there's nothing wrong with the AR1 or 2. Choose between three acres, choose between five acres. This is ridiculous. That is the plan you have given to us. We accept that plan. We can negotiate and work on any issues in between there, three to five acres. I moved from Las Vegas to get away from that garbage. I don't want to live near it. I don't want to be part of it. I came here to the beautiful people of Georgia, in this state, to have freedom, to have 15 acres and enjoy my property. So, finally, as a wise person once said, we, the people, are pissed. If this committee and the Council of Commissioners goes ahead and shows us a double standard with this, it's not hard for us to primary and start changing bodies, and we'll start with the next set of elections. Thank you very much.
Darrell Schumaker.
Hello. Darrell Schumaker, 1060 Rehoboth Church Road. I live right across the street from the proposed subdivision. I too moved here with the aspect of buying land. I went by the variances and all the rules that were set forth. I bought four acres, built a house. I love it. This is not consistent with what the gentleman says is consistent with the other neighborhoods. Because of the floodplain that they can't use, that they're saying is now open green space as a trick, they want to overflow the corner of Rehoboth Church Road and Rehoboth Road with homes. There's nothing on a scale balance here that's equal. One-half of this property is overloaded. And it will be right in front of my home, and yes, that's a concern for me. Also a concern is entrances. Will they be in front of a home? I too understand that progress and change is there, and that there are compromises. Listen to the voice of the people going forward, if this project goes forward, please. Because I would not want an entrance right across the street from my house where headlights are going in. And the walking trails, I'm sorry, I work in a law enforcement capacity, those are just highways for criminals. There's no amenities for children. They're not going to sit at a park bench in a gazebo. I'm sorry. I've worked this every day, and it doesn't happen. And I think this goes hand-in-hand with the other warehouses. I work in Locust Grove area. If you want to see how this will turn out, just drive through McDonough-Locust Grove in an afternoon. It's not good. I moved from the Locust Grove area out here. It's wonderful. Yes, I understand change has to happen. But, let the three-acre lots, or minimum two acres. That's what all the houses on that road are. I understand that, but if you're going to do the variance, they're asking for the special exemption for one acre? No, make it two. Everybody else has land out there. People will buy it. They're going to buy nice land and nice homes. Don't buy spec, just cookie-cutter homes that investors will buy and rent out. They, people won't buy those homes. I see it every day, and trust me, it's a nightmare. I want people to own homes and land, I get it. The people who own the land should be able to sell it and develop it. But, the floodplain's a problem. What about flood insurance for these homeowners? Are they going to be able to afford that? There's so many variables in this that's being thrown up really fast, that needs to take time and think about. Buffer zones, landscaping off of the road. The front of my house, is it going to be looking at the backyard of people? That's not what I want. So, I will be at other meetings, and thank you for your time.
Laney Riggins.
Is Mr. Douglas supposed to be here? Our side, no?
Hold it, just a minute, please.
My name is Laney Riggins.
Would you wait just one moment? If you look at that sign on the wall, it gives you the criteria for public meetings. This is not kindergarten. This is a group of people sitting here who volunteer for this particular task. We go out and we look at these things. We try to make good decisions. We live here. My family's been here since 1868. So, I give a rat's about what happens here, and that's the only reason that I am serving here. But the level of discourse, this applause, I've never been to a meeting and had it this bad. You should be ashamed for having done that. And I think if you will just give us the same respect that you want everybody else to give you, we'll progress along this thing, but there's no sense in trying to antagonize the board that's making the decision. And thank you for letting me say that. Yes, sir. You do. No, but, but, no, but the... I'm saying...
You have a chance to sign up back there, that's where you come voice your opinion. Okay, well then, put a...
Read your guidelines, though. Read your guidelines on the wall. Thank you.
We ready? Okay. My name is Laney Riggins. I live at 1016 Rehoboth Church Road. I'm Darrell's neighbor. It is also directly across the road from our home. We moved from a subdivision out to the country to get away from the riffraff and the ruckus, and to have privacy and space to do things. A lot of my concern is with the roads, because the county does not upkeep them well at all. On our road personally, I mean, I bet there's 100 pot roads that, or potholes that have been filled over and over and over. Weekly, they come out filling potholes. And every time a big truck goes over them, it just pops right back out. The roads need to be fixed. The school systems is a huge thing for me. I have a seven and 10-year-old, and they go to Futuro Road Elementary. I recently had to take them off the bus, because we were so short on bus drivers, that it was taking them from 2:30 to 4:08 to get home. A five-point-something-mile distance. How can we accommodate this with our school systems and our buses? I don't see anything on here as far as, like, a road buffer, tree lines. Are we going to plant trees? Are we going to put anything up to kind of block this away as a sound barrier, as a noise barrier, light barrier? Anything of that sort? I agree with Darrell on everything else, as far as not zoning this as anything less than what it is. If we have to go by those guidelines, they should too. This gentleman here pointed out several one-acre lots around. Those are not in giant subdivisions. Those are a couple one-acre lots here, and a couple one-acre lots there. Even the neighborhoods he pointed out are not near as large as this. So, please just take into consideration the community as a whole when you make this decision, that it's not what's best for us. Thank you.
I can't read the first name. It's Williams at 583 Barnesville Road?
Gwen.
Good afternoon, my name is Gwen Williams. I'm at 583 Barnesville Road. And in response to the small parcels, I'm a multiple parcel owner, as many of the one-acre parcel owners in this area are. I've got 583, 579, 657 Barnesville Road. I run from Lindsay Road to East Rivers, which means Dickerson Road is directly in front of my entry driveway to my property. You know, I'm not going to reiterate what everyone else has said. I did move there. I did seek out the county planning map. I did look at what the projection for growth and development. I'm a real estate agent. I get it. I understand that growth and development is inevitable. It's going to occur. I know we have got a lot of projection for 205, and we've got to have a housing to accommodate that. But, I do think that, you know, no disrespect, he's doing his job, I get that as well. But, when they pull out of this development, the community they create is what we're left with. And, you know, I think that they do have the resources to make a better design on this. Not that it can't be a community, but I don't think one acre, he's saying 1.3 average, no. The map I'm looking at shows 1.3, 1.12. And collectively, he's coming up with these averages. The bulk of these appear to be one-acre lots. And the green space is exactly what it's been said. It's wetland, it can't be developed. So, you can dress it up however you want to, that's not necessarily a green space. So, I'm asking that you guys will listen to us as a community, and that you'll really factor in what's going to be in our best long-term projection for development. We, most of us, especially recent development, there's some beautiful properties out there. People have put a lot of sweat equity, a lot of money into meeting the guidelines that were required for us as individuals to come out and make these developments. I don't think it should be an exception for a heavily-pocketed company to come in and be excused from what we were held accountable to. So, I'm just asking you to factor that in. I would ask that you table this, and, you know, get some requirements. I would like to see architectural mandates, minimums. Not a bunch of vinyl siding coming, being put up, two-story houses. Put some stone in there, put some hardy plank in there. Have a road buffer. Not 50-foot, put a 75-foot buffer with some, you know, natural foliage. If it's going to be a rural area, then try to keep it as such. So, it's my request that you'll consider that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Allison Smiley.
My name is Allison Smiley. I've lived on Rehoboth Church Road almost my entire life. I live about a mile away from this proposed development.
Ms. Smiley, can you give us your address, please?
2078 Rehoboth Church Road, Griffin, Georgia. So, we, my brother and his wife are here. Between us, we own a 200-acre cattle farm out there. So, I remember riding the bus and seeing this beautiful rolling farmland that used to be Alton Alexander's farm. If you have not seen this in person, you need to ride out there before you rezone it. You need to ride out and see this particular property. It's beautiful. It's one of the most beautiful in Spalding County. One of the few undeveloped areas in Spalding County. I'll say the same thing I said when I came for the warehouses on both sides. We only get one of 16. We only get one chance to develop this little corner of Spalding County. We've got warehouses, we've got landfills. Let's keep the zoning that we have on this beautiful property. It's going to develop, we know that. Let's keep the AR zoning that we have right now, three-acre lots. But, look across the street when you drive out there. See, you'll see beautiful mini farms. As Gwen was saying, people are building beautiful homes and farms out there, right across the street. We welcome you. We're glad to have you in the community, welcome. We welcome the people who live here, but let's keep the zoning. Why do we have zoning if we're going to keep changing it all the time? The square footage of the homes has been going up. Bigger homes mean bigger tax revenue. I know that's what it kind of comes down to. Do we have sewer to support this? Do we have restrictions on the facades? Let's keep the zoning that we have. With no outbursts, may I ask if you are here, and many people don't like public speaking. I don't mind, I'll get up here and run my mouth. But, if you are here to oppose this development, please raise your hand. See those hands? We live there. The addresses of the people who are requesting these rezonings, Atlanta, North Atlanta, they're not from around here. We have to live with it. It's a beautiful corner of the county. When I was going to school, I'd tell people where I lived, they didn't know where Rehoboth Church Road was. People have found it, okay? Everybody's found it. It's beautiful. People want to live there, they will build beautiful homes, they will build AR homes. I ask you to oppose it. Let's just vote it down. Let's keep it now. But, at the very least, let's table it. Get some more information, figure out the schools, the infrastructure, what's going to support it. Thank you for your time.
Greg Wren.
Greg Wren, 2155 Rehoboth Church Road. Most of the things have already been said, but I will add that I'm a professional engineer in the state of Georgia for 25 years. I have, I'm an environmental engineer. I have a lot of concerns about this development. I don't know if there's been any environmental impact studies done, but I can see a lot of bad things happening to Buck Creek, which runs behind my house. I see no reason to change zoning on this property. Thank you.
Carol Wren.
Hey, I'm Carol Wren, 2155 Rehoboth Church Road. I'm his other half. I agree with everything that's been said tonight. I would just say a few other things. The gentleman spoke of the development trend in this area. Well, we just moved here last year from Cobb County. And if this is the development trend, it's horrible. That's a bad idea. Cobb County, where we lived in West Cobb, same thing. At once, it's beautiful farmland. And then, they allow one-acre subdivision lots. Next thing you know, subdivisions with half acres. The next thing you know, quarter-acre lots. So, Cobb County overrun with subdivisions. So, we are happy to be down here on our little cattle farm in the country. And this, I can't really read this map. I didn't know this map existed till tonight. But, this kind of breaks my heart, honestly, looking at this. So, I agree with the others and say, at a minimum, keep the zoning as it is, at three acres. And that's it. Thank you for your time.
George Warren.
My name is George Warren. I live at 455 Buck Creek Road. I agree with everything the people have said tonight, but the biggest problem that I see is the transportation infrastructure in that area will not handle the additional traffic that's going to be put on those roads, especially Rehoboth Church Road. Rehoboth Church Road has cracked. Every time it rains, we get new potholes and old potholes reopening. 179 parcels, that's a minimum of 358 more vehicles you're going to put on that road. And Rehoboth Road. Rehoboth Road, where the little bridge goes over before you get to South McDonough. They're constantly refilling potholes on that. Add more vehicles to that transportation infrastructure, it's going to fail.
Kaye Wimby. Kay Wimby.
Hi, I'm Kay Wimby, 164 South Walkers Mill Road. I agree with what everybody has said. I think the developers should take a look at North Walkers Mill Road. They did a subdivision in there that's like anywhere from five to 10 acre lots with houses over 2,000 square feet. I want to say we don't want a cold water creek in our area. And the one thing I'm going to reiterate, we keep hearing this is the comprehensive plan. You just got to live with it. So if the comprehensive plan is this is a rural community, this should be denied. That's all I got to say.
Mr. Aitken.
My name is Terry Aitkins. I live on 27 Liberty Circle. I would like to address you tonight as the subdivision on Rehoboth Church Road and Rehoboth Road and all in that 367 acres. How, or what, what kind of sewage system are you going to have if this is, if this goes? What type of water system is it going to be? Well water or is it going to be county water? And another thing I have a problem with is the size of the lots. I feel like the size of lots need to be larger, three to five acres. I think also that the entrances and exits is going to cause a heavy traffic problem. We already have heavy traffic problems on these roads. And the roads are not in good shape. They're not being maintained. Spalding County is not taking care of them. And another problem we have is code enforcement laws. And code enforcement laws are on things in your yard, around your neighborhood, cars and trucks with no tags, front yards, backyards, left and right of your house, across the road. And I know that the county has addressed this. There was in the Griffin Daily News that sometime back, and this, they have no enough people to take care of that, like to go out and they knock on doors and give warnings and citations. And then they may give a fine. I understand in the paper that it said that they would need to hire about 10 code enforcement people. Now, you have to agree with me on this. We need to clean up this county also. It needs to be beautified. There are surrounding counties that are in better shape than Spalding County. And I'm sorry that I feel that way, but we need to take care of these things along with this 179 units needs to be increased in acreage size. And we need to take a look at the traffic areas and the roads. Thank you.
Okay, I guess we'll hear the staff report now.
All right.
Eva, before we do the staff report, could y'all pull up, after you get through the comp plan from the county's website and also the Q Public? Could you pull up the comprehensive plan from the website and go to page 38? And could you also pull up Q Public tax data showing Rehoboth Church Road? Yes, after the staff report. Go to page 38. Thank you. And then could you also have Q Public on Rehoboth Church Road waiting? So while Eva's doing that, Mr. Chairman, if it's all right with you, I would like to tell everybody, so the folks will understand how these reports are prepared. Spalding County does not have, at the present time, a community development director to review these. Ms. Morales is a planner, identified as a Planner One, I believe.
That's correct.
Eva, your title. She is learning this. And then I have worked on zoning issues for the county since 1995. So working together, we have prepared the staff report. So Ms. Morales can go through the preliminary information. And then I'd like to follow up after Eva's done to walk through how the staff report comes out.
All right. As you've stated before, they are requesting to be rezoned from agricultural and residential one to single residential or R1, single family, low density. This does consist of 179 residential lots to be developed in two phases. Phase one will include 94 lots and phase two will include 85 lots. Minimum proposed lot size is one acre. They do have a special exemption application that will come before the Board of Appeals on the 8th. Let me go back. So that's pretty much it. We have given them some conditions. Now, Newton, and you can sit back, you can help me out with this.
Do you want me to pick up from here?
Yeah, usually, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, usually the facade and everything is done through the preliminary plot. Is that correct?
I'm sorry.
The facade elevations and architectural designs are done through preliminary.
We are suggesting, we are suggesting that be addressed before it goes to BOC.
Yes.
And so the folks will understand that are here, we impose conditions in large part to try to ameliorate impacts coming from the development. If you would, look, pull up the comprehensive plan first.
You need her to zoom in?
I'm sorry?
Do you need her to zoom in?
No, no. Go to page 38 though, because it has both the text and it has the plan, plan map.
I'm sorry, but we are really struggling.
Go down.
I'll talk louder. I can talk loud.
Keep going.
Okay. Usually folks don't want to have lawyers talking loud, so.
There we go. Is that it?
No, 38 calls, it identifies the rural community character area. It's the next one after call.
There we go.
There we go. The staff report for purposes of this application looks just at rezoning, which is a request to go to R1, which is a 2,000 square foot heated square foot house. Okay? We do not address in this the request to go to one acre lots. So for purposes of tonight, looking at zoning, we are looking just at the request to go to a subdivision of two acre lots with 2,000 square foot houses. Now, if you will look at the bottom, the bottom left-hand corner, this is the text, I believe, I'm sorry, I can't remember which speaker identified this, but this was the text that was, that was read. Excuse me. And if you will look at the map, your property is located in the far, obviously, the far southeast corner of the county, and it is identified as rural community. And the folks who quoted from the plan have quoted it correctly. Now, the part of the issue, part of the things that we have to look at is compatibility. And in the staff report, we do an analysis of lot sizes around your, around this property. And if you look, now, can we go to the tax map at Q Public? And can you back out a little, please? Okay. As a general rule, what you have here immediately to this property's northwest is what I call runaway lakes, because one of the first clients I had in Griffin was runaway lakes fighting over HOA documents. Those lots range from one acre to 10-plus acres. And it depends upon where the lot is. If you look further to the southwest, you will see two, one subdivision off of Rehoboth Church, which is a smaller subdivision, and it is older, but those are one acre lots. And then one other one that's called Calhoun. Now, if you look to the east, you will see that the lots are much more rural. And if you look to the south, the lots are much more rural. They are larger. So the question is, under AR, under R1 zoning, is a two acre lot compatible? Many of you will say that it is not. All right. But you also have to recognize there are some one acre lots that are around you. Now, from the standpoint of zoning alone, we have made, we have made a recommendation that the two acre lots probably are consistent with the plan, but it's a close call. But the bulk of the issues you're raising tonight go to the Board of Appeals next week. And there is specific text. Can we go back to the plan? Comp plan, please? And I don't mean to take up too much time, but I think some education on this is. And y'all may not agree. I understand that. That's fine. And y'all can yell at me and call me names. I've been called every name in the book in zoning hearings. It's okay. All right. I'm an old man and will soon retire. So you take, but look at, look at the plan and you will see a specific reference to moving from two acre lots to one acre lots. And you will see that the special exception reference says that those lots are inconsistent with the plan. Now, we will address that next week. So from the standpoint of two acre lots, the recommendation is that it be conditionally approved, but recognizing, and the recommendation specifically states that zoning to R1 does not establish any precedent, the recommendation for zoning to R1 does not establish any precedent or suggest a recommendation for approval of applicant's special exception application. So that's deferred to next week. Prior to approval of a final plat, now, this assumes that the Board of Commissioners zones, and the Board of Commissioners can deny zoning and they can deny special exception. But the staff rec says, prior to approval of a final plat, the developer shall present proposed documents to create a homeowners association. Prior to approval of a final plat, the developer shall present restrictive covenants which restrict the rental of dwellings to 10% of the total dwellings in the subdivision based on the number of units at the time. We are very concerned about the proliferation of houses being built for purposes of just rental. And then finally, prior to hearing before the Board of Commissioners, the developer shall present proposed elevations for dwellings to be built in the subdivision and will provide appropriate architectural and aesthetics design requirements, which shall be made a condition of zoning if that occurs. And that's not my call and it's not this board's call. So with that, and looking at the maps and trying to follow the comp plan, the recommendation would be for conditional approval of rezoning to R1, but no comment, no position until we get to the Board of Appeals on the special exception.
Why is it the staff report with the agenda package?
Well, it's like I said, we don't have a staff. And Ms. Morales and I were, were working into the late night last night to finish our work on this and do the necessary analysis. And that's the best thing I can, that's the only thing I can. No, sir. The Board of, the way these are designed, the Board of Appeals is heard next week. I think it's next week. It's the 8th. By the way, it's on the 8th this month. All right? And then they dovetail to the Board of Commissioners. So when the Board of Commissioners meets at the end of March, they will have the recommendation on the zoning application. And that may be very different from what comes out of the Board of Appeals. And they will have the recommendation from the Board of Appeals. And then they make a decision. We consolidate them for hearing, so you only have to come back one more time. And they make the, now, they can table, they can do any number of things with it. Nobody, far be it from me to predict what a, an elected official will do. But it comes up at one time. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the folks listening.
Yes.
Can I ask a question about the yellow signs that are out by the road? There's not any posted on Dickerson, so none of those people were aware.
Postcards were sent out to all the parcels that touch that parcel.
Folks, we have, we have specific, folks, we have specific requirements, both under state law and under the zoning ordinance, for notices to folks, publication in the paper, notice to adjoining property owners, and then also there should have been signage.
So can I clarify? You said March 8th, because that's a Wednesday.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I'm saying. It's March 8th because we've had to move that meeting due to a conflict on Thursday. Yes, ma'am.
Those will be updated depending on the decision of tonight.
We'll have all the information for you after we adjourn here. Frank, did you have anything to add?
What I would like to compliment.
I would say the staff report is part of the public record. And assume, Eva, we post that as well and can make it available if you want to see it.
Yeah.
I'd like to compliment the audience on the level of decorum that they have assumed. And we appreciate that because we sit up here and we have to make tough decisions. And it's hard to make tough decisions when somebody's shooting at you. So I appreciate this level of decorum that you have expressed. Thank you.
Can I say something?
We need to, we need to move on here.
I didn't know I had to sign up. We called several times and asked the county if Dickerson Road would be affected by this, if they would be dropping down Dickerson Road. I've lived there for 31 years, 82 Dickerson Road. My name is Tammy Lyle. I own a barber shop here in town, and I'm not trying to be rude at all, because I cut a lot of people's hair here. But I just want to say, I've lived there for 31 years. I've raised all my children. It was a dead end, dirt road when I moved on it. And now it's a paved road. And we've been told all this time, my nephew has called multiple times, and they told him that our road was not slated for an entryway to this. And now we find out because Ms. Laney, I saw her post on Facebook, that our road is in fact an entrance for this. My mother is 86 and she is blind, and she lives in an in-law suite on my home. And I worry about what may come on that road. And I appreciate your time and I'm sorry, but this will affect all of us out there. We live in the country and we're just old country folks. And I'm sorry that we have been passionate about this because this is our homes. I think, thank you for listening, but it's been upsetting that I feel like we've been lied to, that that is not, we've not, we've been told that that was not on the route for this. I feel sorry for all these people that have just moved down here and found our little piece of heaven. When I closed on my property, my lawyer said, take care of this two acres. They're not making any more of it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I know you need to move on, but it's something the attorney said if I could address real quick. I know you're aggravated, but I'm sorry.
All right, come on.
About the special, that little gray box you quoted.
on the paper that the firm that this gentleman represents that y'all provided me. And this is a quote. It says that, "In order to develop the property with substantial open space in economical, feasible manner, given the water courses and soil, a special exemption is required." If it's not economical, don't build there.
Three acre requirement.
Okay. Nick, do you have anything to add?
No.
Just as a matter of question with the attorney, if we were to choose to hold this, how would that affect the variance application for the SE?
I'm sorry.
For the special exception?
It would still proceed.
It would, it would still, go to them?
Now, the Board of Appeals can hold it there. There's no way for us to predict what y'all do. But the goal is to have a, and I might add, y'all can send something forward with no recommendation at all. You can recommend approval, you can recommend denial. You're not bound by the staff report. You can send it up with no recommendation. But the goal is to have every issue related to the property dovetail in front of the Board of Commissioners simultaneously, having been through you and having been through Board of Appeals with a special exception.
Thank you.
Bruce?
No, but I, I do, you know, going back to the comprehensive plan, and granted, like the attorney said, it talks about, if you lower it to, further lower from two to one acres, then it's inconsistent with the intent of the area. But it also says that it encourages, should be no less than three acres. And, you know, I, I think that that's a good point. And, and if we can stick with that and make something work, sounds like, as the gentleman pointed out, you know, the people are trying to put more lots in there, but they're gonna have to jump through more hoops and more issues to do it. So maybe you could stick with the three acres and, and make it work a little better for everybody. So, I mean, it does spell that out in the comprehensive plan, and I, I think there's, that's warrants consideration.
John, I would point out, we do usually allow rebuttal from the developer.
Okay. All right. Well, my personal feeling about it is that I don't particularly like the design that he threw up there. I do feel like he robbed lots and to stay out of the wet areas there. And I share Mr. Ballard's thoughts as well, that three acres seems to be a pretty good starting point out there. And I don't know what it's gonna take to get the roads fixed in this county. But I share some of your angst about that as well. So with that being said, let's give the developer a chance to come back up here and make a statement.
Thank you. So most of the things I was going to talk about, the attorney here spoke of, I think the big points were the design standards of, of the homes, which obviously we would, we would work with, with the city. I believe under the special exemption, there's, there's, or I'm sorry, the county. I believe under the special exemption process, there's certain design standards. It's a 413G double prime. And we would meet the, two of those, there's, there's like a list of factors, we would meet those factors. Specifically, we would meet the, you know, the wood siding. I know somebody said, we don't want, you know, vinyl siding. We would have, you know, the wood siding. And then also the other factor we would be able to meet is the slabbing factor. You know, I know there's a big concern about, about rentals in the area. And that is, we, you know, can, we agree with the staff's report and their conditions that the, that the HOA would limit the neighborhood to 10% rentals. And, you know, as far as, as far as...
Come on, guys, let's be fair.
So, at, at the end of the day, what we're asking is for, for you to recommend, in accordance with, with the staff report, to rezone from AR1 to R1. So from three acres to two acres. That's, that's all we request. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment from up here?
John, one, one other thing. And again, you know, we, we sometimes do kind of come through these things, and bigger is not always better in some cases. And, but it does, if, you know, one of the things that's looking at here, we are talking about 2,000 square foot, based on what he's saying, minimum heated square footage, as Newton pointed out. One thing, and that's why I was just going back and looking at the guidelines as to what's required. And, and AR1, you know, if we stick it with AR1, it would just go along with 1,500 square feet. So you'll have a smaller, smaller house size possible there for that. So again, we have run into issues like that, where sometimes that was kind of what people were shooting for. But, you know, I, I don't know, I just want to make everybody aware of it as we move forward here.
There's no other comment, I'll entertain a motion.
Based on the inconsistencies with the comprehensive plan and some unanswered questions about the characteristic of how it's going to affect the traffic, the roadways, and the green spaces being environmentally impacted anyway, I would recommend that we, and make a motion that we deny this application.
Have a motion on the floor to deny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Those in favor signify, raise your right hand.
Folks, remember, this is...
Now, folks, remember, this is just a recommendation, hold on.
Remember, this is only, this is only a recommending body. We'll see y'all back here on Wednesday, March the 8th. And then in front of the Board of Commissioners, Thursday, March 23rd.
Yes. Okay.
If you could go ahead and move out into the hall, we have some other things to take care of. Please go on, we have rest of the meeting to go on. We, we need...
I see. He's a fine, fine fella. Yes, ma'am.
Frank, Frank, move them all, we gotta get, I don't want to be here all night.
What's up, man? How you doing? I was a little dusty losing your doors. We'll see how it works out. Yeah, I think we need to work on it. Yeah. Hopefully so. Good to see you, man.
She acknowledged as a background.
Well, I knew that.
This'll be in the first, this'll be in your first meeting.
I tell you, Bruce, I hate to slip, those, those two letters, you know, they were threatening us. I didn't care. You know, we're good.
Yeah, I don't...
We're good.
I think we're held responsible. The comprehensive plan, the long-range vision, and that's really hard for me. Like a tiptoe.
All right.
Okay. I think we can resume. Next item on the agenda is application 2303Z, 715 WW Hall LLC owner, 4th Sixth Street, approximately 9.66 acres located in landlot 207 in the second land district. The applicant is requesting a rezoning to be removed from the Mill Village overlay. And I believe we have Gwendolyn Lucas signed up to speak for this.
Good evening. I'm Gwendolyn Lucas, representing 715 WW Hall, located at 4 Sixth Street in Griffin, Georgia. We submitted a...
We need your address, please.
My home address?
Your address.
Oh, I don't reside in Griffin, but my father does. That's okay? Okay, my home address is 1954 Sandtown Road in Atlanta, Georgia. We submitted, well, let me say, this is going on for about three years now. We've been trying to get a business license down here. And I guess we were zoned incorrectly, or we bought and it was rezoned. And so we're now applying to be rezoned so that we can obtain a business license. We purchased the Dundee Mill, and we had the name changed from Ford Park Avenue to 4 Sixth Street, because when you Google it, it comes up as a house. So we didn't want to confuse the people when they came over. We've been in business for over 40 years. My father started it in 1979. And he's a resident here and has been for the last 18 years. And it's his dream to have a business here in his hometown, well, not his hometown, but where he's residing in Griffin. He's on Mangham Road. We've been working with several businesses here in Griffin to help us. One is the Griffin Gate Company. If you know the Dundee Mill, there's fencing over there that we have to replace. So we're working with them, and also a sprinkler's company. But we can't get everything done because we haven't obtained a business license, and they need more electricity. So we have been working with the office to make sure that we are compliant. We did make a deposit into the United Bank in Griffin so that we can start that process. And if you go to, I think it's page, the one with the different phases. Kiko. Development and Phases. Oh, yes, Traffic Route Plan. Sorry. Where we're located is off of 16 and Green Valley Road. So we would like to route the trucks directly from Highway 16 to Green Valley Road, no more than two trucks a day. There would be no parking on that road, no idling. The property has enough space for the trucks to pull in and pull out. We're only open from 8 to 3, and we're not open on the weekends. So there won't be any traffic coming on the weekends. And we are going to work on the first building. There are three buildings on that property. And if you know the mill, you know that it was partially demolished. So half of it is, well, actually all of it, it's pretty much open. So the first phase is that building there. We want to, we deposit 200,000 in the United Bank so that we can start with the sprinkler system, putting bathrooms in, because currently we have to use porta-potties. We don't have bathrooms there. Replacing the roof, painting, installing drywall. And the next lot should be what the building should look like. That's the proposed idea of what the building should look like. So as you're coming down, if you're coming from one, from 16 on Green Valley, you can see the building from there. So we want you to be able to see that as you're coming down the roadway.
Can I ask a question about that? So that's gonna be the face of that building, kind of facing the parking lot? If we go back on that? Can we just go back one? So that's gonna be on the left side of Phase 1 building?
So you see where the trailers are? That's the entrance there? So it'll be something sitting right there.
Oh, a new building?
Yes. The, where those trailers are there, we'll need that for docking. So we, well, if you didn't know, our business is used and new commercial truck tires. And so we buy and sell. We don't store tires, we buy and sell commercial truck tires. So the trucks that will pull in are taking the tires to customers, or they're taking them to Liberty in Calhoun to recycle.
Okay, so the current building on the property that has VT tire on it with the wall falling down into the street?
Yeah. That happened from the hurricane.
The tornado.
I'm sorry.
Tornado.
I mean, the turn... Sorry.
Some wind.
And Griffin, it's not called Griffin Gate, it starts with an M. But they came by, and they're gonna give us a quote to replace that wall.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, can, so, let's go back to those Phase 1, 2, 3. So what, on those plans you have there, what, what do you plan on doing in Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3?
So we're gonna start with Phase 1 first. Phase 2 and 3 will come later. But Phase 1 will have the tires there that will be shipped off either to Liberty or to customers.
Okay. All right. I, I had a question about that. And not to put too fine a point on it, but that's a rather large building. And it looks like to me there could be a lot of accumulation there of tires. And I guess my fear is that you guys move off and leave a building full of tires that we get stuck with.
We definitely won't do that. In Atlanta, we have a 58,000 square foot warehouse. And every day, we're constantly buying and selling tires. So we definitely won't run off and do that. That's his baby.
It was alarming to me to see the tires that were piled outside, kind of in the parking lot there where the trailers are backed up. And, you know, here in the south, that's a big no-no.
Right.
If they collect water, they collect mosquitoes and other things. And so the other question I had for you is, it perturbed me that you would come to Griffin and operate a business without a business license. I guess, what was the thinking there?
Well, we actually didn't know we wouldn't be able to obtain one. When we bought it, we thought that everything was in order. And when I went to make the application, we were denied. And we've been going through this for about, well, almost three years now. But we've done what they've asked us to do. And this latest step is for us to be compliant and to put the sprinklers in. They did give us, I think it was not last year, but the year before, authorization for a little bit of electricity. So we were able to do some of the work, but we can't do all because it needs more electricity. We were told that we have to, we can't necessarily operate, but we can take tires out. So the trucks that are coming in are taking tires out.
Okay, so the 14 trailers that you could see, the tires hanging out of them, those are to go into the building?
Eventually, but some are gonna go to Liberty. We only have one driver. It's pretty hard to hire people right now. People are quitting, and they're going with bigger companies. We had... We had three, but we're down to one, and so he's been pretty tapped out.
Okay, and then the, the area that kind of flanks the railroad track, when you come over, uh, seem to be in a huge state of disrepair and stuff growing up and everything. Is there any plan there to clean that, that frontage up there?
Yes, so we deposited money in the bank for that reason, to clean up the property and to make the adjustments that were required by the county.
Okay.
So again, have you looked at the conditions that are on this?
Yes.
Okay, so it talks about storage in, in the building, and right now there's a lot of storage out in trailers. So what, what would preclude that from, you know, you from keeping on doing it, and what's the extra effort? I mean, just putting them in the building just to take them out again, or I don't exactly understand, you know?
Well, the reason that they were in trailers is because we brought them from, we had a property in East Point that we sold, and so he put all those tires in trailers to bring them down here with the assumption that he'd be able to put them in the building, but we were told that we weren't able to do so, so they've been in the trailers.
Okay, so then you just had to keep them out in the trailers?
Yes, until we're able to fix up the building and put them inside, and they can check them, and then they can send the ones that are bad to Liberty and the ones that are good for resale for casings that we can put in the building.
So you have to kind of sort through the trailers to determine what's good and what's bad?
Yes. So the business is, I don't know if I'm supposed to say this or not, but the business is, um, we put trailers at different properties, like Good Gear and Best Drive and those places, and we collect their junk trailers, I'm sorry, junk tires. Well, what they think is junk is actually treasure for us because they, um, Good Gear actually buys those tires if they're good, and they retread them and they use them for casings. So, um, that's what our business is, but we also incorporated new tires that we sell to retail and some wholesale customers. But yes, the reason they're still in trailers is because we can't take them off.
Okay, and you have seen all the conditions that were imposed?
Yes. You mean by the county?
Yes.
Yes, uh-huh.
Frank, you got anything to add?
Yeah, I, I don't see any purpose at all in us taking anything out of that village overlay. And I talked with the county commissioner today, who lives there, who is Commissioner of Flowers. She's very familiar with that piece of property. Candidly, if you people have been in business forty-four years and come down by a piece of property and they don't know ahead of time whether you can or cannot put your stuff in there, uh, I sympathize with you, but I certainly could not vote to take that parcel out of the overlay.
How many employees do you, would you have? Have you answered that?
Well, we have twelve now in Atlanta, but we plan to hire in Griffin because the amount of time it takes us to get here is the, uh, we're taking away from work time, so it takes an hour, um, coming and an hour going back.
Mary Louie?
I share the concern of, of, uh, allowing some, the activity within the overlay district that's obviously inconsistent with that to, to be removed, um, for an operation this size, and I'm very concerned about the anticipation of use without the proper permits in hand, and that's very concerning to me that, uh, the business plan didn't necessarily speak to the needs of this county and the requirements that we have on our books, which are readily available when reviewed, so I'm not, uh, not satisfied with the way things have happened so far on this property, so I'm a little concerned about that.
Bruce?
Yeah, um, I'm a little embarrassed to ask, but I, just not knowing exactly on the Mill Village overlay, Newton, if you wouldn't mind, what, so what would be allowed on this property based on the way it is now?
Um, Bruce, it would have to be redeveloped as either a residential development, commercial, that would have the character of the Mill Village. Give me a second, and let me see. I didn't realize I was going to have to log back in to pull the ordinance up.
You need me to pull it up?
I know it well enough. All right, um, when, when we did the Mill Village, we knew this piece of property was a problem because it is an industrial building that was in disrepair.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Mr. Lucas bought the property prior to the time Mill Village was enacted, but he did not start the business or get his license before the Mill Village was enacted. So the Mill Village overlay is enacted, and he goes to get his business license, and it's denied.
Yeah.
And it has been denied for two years. All right. He was represented, is Mike Kendall still working with you all, Gwen?
No.
The county cited him, and there were several citations related to just what she has said, electricity, lack of, um, sprinkler, fire violations and so forth, and they wind up in magistrate court, and this is outlined in the staff report in some detail. In magistrate court last year, and Stephanie Wyndham was representing the county in the magistrate court, and Michael was representing Mr. Lucas at that time, the county directed Stephanie to agree to hold the citations to allow them time to come in and do what we're doing tonight, so with making no guarantees certainly anything would be approved. So, but we knew this property would be a problem because unless somebody comes in and just tears the thing down and builds a new subdivision of mill-style houses, this property and this building will continue to sit and continue to deteriorate. So the recommendation that you got from Eva and myself is put the necessary timelines on it to impose on the property owner the obligation to get the stuff improved, redo the entrance, give us a sign, give us a nice signage, have the entrance coming in off of Rehoboth at six, and then work on the buildings as, as y'all have proposed, um, for, for that purpose. If, if it had, if the Mill Village had not, overlay had not been adopted, Mr. Lucas could have done this as a matter of right.
Okay.
And therein is the problem with the property. It is a problem piece of property, and, and Mr. Lucas is your father, correct?
Yes.
It's family-owned business, and, um, I, I think he really didn't understand how he could be obligated to comply with Mill Village when he had bought the piece of property when he could do the tire property. So you, you have a choice tonight. I mean, we either, you can continue to have the property within Mill Village overlay, and we have, we, that means y'all can't do what you want to do, and we'll have to see what happens with those buildings. Or alternatively, you have the choice or the option of putting enough restrictions on it to see if this can be, uh, brought back to an industrial track, but to do that, and at a decent industrial track, but to do that, you're going to have to let it out of the Mill Village overlay.
Yeah, what, is there a map that shows the Mill Village overlay that we can see?
Yes, ma'am.
Where this-
This is, this is the last parcel on it. Can, uh, so can you pull up the Q public map for this?
And it does border the railroad and everything?
It, it is the last track, and the railroad is the boundary, and there are no Mill Village restrictions beyond the railroad, and there are not a lot of properties that are located on Park Avenue, but some are appropriately Mill Village houses. And the, the goal, Ms. Charlotte, the goal is with Mill Village is to encourage redevelopment of housing that would be affordable using that architectural, requiring that architectural style.
Right.
And, um, uh, you know, the Mill Village is in large part are the history of Griffin, and, uh, that, so the goal has been to try to encourage that re, redevelopment, but, but, but obviously this was never a Mill Village house. Okay, obviously.
But it's, it's peripheral to the overlay. It is not-
When you, when we, when, when we, when Eva can pull up the- There you go.
And as you go on up the road there, I mean, it's more industrial.
That, that's correct. Now here, uh, Eva has highlighted it in the, in green. The Mill Village overlay ends at the railroad tracks, and you can see that there are really no Mill Village houses on the south side of Park Avenue. But the idea was, now currently, Gwen, tell me if I'm right, the entrance is off of Park Avenue now, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. So the requirement for having the entrance moved is to have it come off the south corner at Rehoboth so that nobody has to send trucks into or down Sixth, um, Sixth or along Park Avenue.
And they can't cross railroad, correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
And Eva, could you go back? Could you go back to the site plan that Mr. Lucas gave us in August?
In August?
Yeah, it's, it's in the staff, isn't it in the staff report?
Yeah, I think it is up there. Scroll down. If not, it's in the agenda.
No, okay.
It's in the agenda.
Is it in the agenda?
Mm-hmm. Go to the Internet Explorer.
There was a drawing here.
He gave it, he gave us a site plan in August that showed the new entrance.
Yeah, I saw it.
So Newton, you're in essence saying that nobody in their right mind is ever going to buy that property to put nine houses on it?
It would be, look, if, when you look at the demo costs that they're going to have, John, it's, it's going to be problematic. Go to, no, that's not it. Keep going.
There was a drawing.
Was it, it was, was it in your PowerPoint, Gwen?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I knew I saw it.
Here it is.
So this property is at the tail end?
The tail end of the Mill Village overlay, yes, I understand.
And-
Here we go, that's it.
The structure that is there had, had heavy industrial equipment with-
Part of mill.
And so if I were going to build a house there, uh, I would have to mitigate-
Right.
What, four foot of concrete, three foot of concrete?
You would have, you would have significant redevelopment costs to convert this into-
So the possibility is probably not very good that it will ever be-
Could it be? Is, and my gut feeling is, and I'm not a developer, but my gut feeling is it'd be, it would be cost prohibitive to incur the cleanup of the site to build mill houses.
That's-
Now, could you have loft units in there? If somebody wanted to live there? And, and I might add, Mr. Lucas's property in Atlanta is on Murphy Avenue?
Uh, West Whitehall, but it is across from Murphy.
Right across from Murphy, and y'all may not know this, but that's a little distance from West End, and that is now gentrified into an arts and loft community. So, I mean, I guess an industrial site could be transformed here to-
Yeah, but those buildings, I don't really have, I, I don't think you could do that with those buildings.
They don't have the appeal that some of our mill, old mills have.
Right, and we, and we tore those, and Bruce, we tore those down. But anyway, you can see that he came forward with a plan with the entrances discussed. You can, Gwen, there is one that shows an office space that I assume would be the retail center, but I don't see that one on this plan.
Is it the next one?
That's the little new part, I think, right at the end of the parking lot there. It says new.
Yeah.
Right, kind of where the tanks are is where the new building is going.
They're going to leave the tanks, they're going to leave the tanks as objects of art and history of the site, right, Gwen?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Looks like they'd be worth something to scrap.
And, and, um, and then there would be another building, a newer building, which is the retail store that would be built, Gwen, I'm assuming it's right about where that semicircular loop is, in the, in the green on the picture?
Oh, the picture. Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I don't have the-
Go back to that last one, that site plan. It had new, on there. See, it's got new office right at the end of the parking there.
Yes.
Between the tanks and the building. So is that, is that where that building that you're, we're showing us will go?
I'm sorry, my eyes are so bad, I cannot see. Is it where the little circles are?
Just, just above the little circles. It, it says new office. That's going to be your office building. Is that it, or is that where it's going?
Yes. He did the diagram.
But, but my question with that is, so right now you've got, right there where that parking lot is, is where you have a loading dock at the moment, and so then you're going to actually be going around to the other side of that building to load and unload your building?
Well, right when you come in to the right, it's some space right there.
So, so really it's going to be up there is where the building, new building is going to be?
And I think right there is also where the water or whatever that is, what's, we all have the bathrooms and everything right there for the employees-
Right.
And the customers.
Yeah, there's another, I think, a concrete slab there, so I guess that's what we call-
Bunking here. And that's near the fence that you were talking about that had fallen down.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Can I make a suggestion? I, this first I've heard about the Mill Village. I like the idea. Says this is old Dundee number five. Can she reface the front of it, the mimic old Dundee number five for the aesthetics of the Mill Village?
Didn't, that faced the Mill Village of, didn't it?
Yes, it did.
The original.
And, and that's what I'm talking about, if you go back to the three phases, the Phase Two is actually part of the original mill.
But the only thing with that is, then you're, well, I mean, it was trying to keep traffic off of the road, that main road right there.
I'm not, I'm not using it for, like-
Just for looks?
Just the aesthetics of it to bring back the Mill Village look-
Right.
To the building.
That's an idea.
We could, we could, Gwen, we could consider that if y'all are willing to look at it and identify that as an aesthetic condition if you wanted to as part of the development plan.
Okay, I'll let him know that.
I mean, I think it's a, I hadn't thought about it.
Thank you.
I think it's a good idea.
I think, I think it is. It won't, it won't-
That would help to capitalize on it being the- That would help to capitalize on it being the Mill overlay.
That's correct.
My, um, my brother used to work there, that's why I'm a little bit tired.
And so y'all will know, there are two overlay areas. One is East Griffin, where number two and number five were. And the other is the one across from the experiment station, which is where number one and the bleachers.
Not much left out there.
Not much left.
Not much left, at all. Now, I do have to note that Mr. Lucas has came into our office repeated times to try to work things out. Eventually, he ended up in magistrate court. Even after his case was heard by magistrate, magistrate court, Ms. Lucas and Mr. Lucas came into our office and they sat down and pretty much tried, they tried to work something with us to make sure that they were as compliant as possible. And this is how we got to where we're at now.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be a major undertaking, I mean, it could certainly be done and be done nice. I think I could see a lot of opportunity in the future for this property if you could get it moving in the right direction.
Yes, thank you.
I guess my question is the timeline of it, but what, what's your personal feeling about how long this would take?
Frank, you locked up?
I think Frank has locked up.
Well, hopefully, as soon as we're able to get a business license, we can start immediately. We already have the contact with the sprinkler system, we've already paid half of it. And the, um, he has a couple of contractors that can come in and start working immediately on the drywall and the painting.
Get your roof done first.
Oh, yes.
And you'll, Bruce, you'll see that we've asked for them to provide us with a timeline that would be adopted by the Board of Commissioners, should they attempt, should they approve it.
Okay. What you got here, Frank?
A copy of the overlay? So, Newton, again, going back to the, while you said it was kind of a problem, when you, did it kind of just get in there?
Bruce, that was a conscious decision made that unless something, a plan came forward to redo that building, it would be in the overlay, so nobody could just go in there and put junk.
Okay.
I mean, just leave it as a mess. But we recognized also that redevelopment of property as Mill Village style, architectural style housing could be problematic.
Frank, you missed one thing when you were going, we kind of talked about possible options of doing something with the, where the face of the building used to be on the, just the northeast side there. But at phase two, which used to be the original building, that maybe even looking at possibly kind of doing something like that to look more similar to what the old Mill looked like, looking out over the overlay, is a possibility.
Have you had any conversations with Commissioner Flowers Taylor?
Um, when we first moved here. But not since then.
How did that go?
Um, at first, it went well, she took us around, and we had a meeting with Captain Williams and the fire chief, I think, yes. And so her and my dad have talked, but they haven't talked since then, I don't think.
Might be a good idea to resume that relationship.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, it, it seems like we have a catch twenty-two here.
We, we didn't tell you tonight would be easy.
I guess if we can, I, I looked through the conditions here and there, they seem to be pretty comprehensive. The only thing I don't see on here is the idea of having a, well, I guess H would cover what you're talking about, Newton, with the, a potential timeline there.
Timeline with bench?
Yeah.
And so, what would be the possible, potential ramifications if benchmarks weren't met and stuff? And how does, how does that kind of monitor itself?
They would, they would have repaired at their risk.
And I think after speaking with fire marshal, he does have to report back to court depending on what happens tonight and at Board of Commissioners, and that will also lead on to more citations if need to, if this does not get passed.
I think you're gonna have to have Commissioner Flowers Taylor support on this. And I, my personal opinion is that we ought to table it until you can have that conversation.
Okay.
Cause when you go to the Commissioners, if you aren't on good, if you and she are on the good, on the same page, it's not gonna pass.
Okay.
Is that gonna hinder you, my, you've been evidently dealing with it for quite a while now? Another month to kind of work through some details, is that gonna?
It does. But I guess we'll, I'll just have to let them know what happened and see if we can, um, we sold the building that we have in Atlanta, and we have to be out by March thirtieth. Yeah.
About to get cr- about to get cracking then.
So we have to find somewhere to go.
Wow.
Well, I guess, I'm just sitting here thinking out loud, Frank, that if, if we were to approve this, I guess Gwen can always say no when it gets up to her, right?
She can have time to go talk to Gwen before the meeting.
There will be enough time for her to sit down with Gwen.
Well, you don't want to get into a situation in which you're sending somebody with a knife to a gunfight.
I'll call her.
The staff has recommended a conditional approval.
Right, with a lot of conditions.
Yes.
Well, we have, even I had Frank discussion with Gwen by means of a Zoom call, I guess about a month ago.
Yes.
And Gwen understands that the issue here is that there was non-compliance before. And the building has to be renovated, and it has to be a decent job to make the industrial property an asset, rather than a liability to us trying to get people to redo Mill Village houses.
Right.
So therefore, yes, the conditions proposed are, I, we tried to be thorough. Uh, Gwen, I don't think you would have been surprised by any of them, though we didn't have a chance to really go over them with you beforehand. But it's intended to move this to completion so that there is a, if it's going to be there, a thrive, a business that's active on a redeveloped site.
It really doesn't affect the overall for the Mill Village because it is at the tail end.
That's correct.
Right.
Just got caught in the cracks. Just got caught in the cracks. And as Newton says, it basically was included in there to keep, it was a protective measure to keep from having something go in there that, that was a terribly negative effect on everything else that was being done.
Not that we're prone to development that could have a negative impact, that's what I'm telling you.
I, I have it not with me tonight, but an article, that was a half-page article written in the Griffin Daily News in 2019 by a gentleman named Dexter Sherrill. And he was reminiscing on his growing up in the east Mill Village. And talked about all of the things that he loved and the things that, how people were together and they, there was no boundaries on yards, everybody played in everybody else's yard. And he has been back since then and, uh, looked at some of the changes. But I thought if there was anything at all that would make you think that the regentrification or whatever you want to call it of that area was worth it, that article would. So that may be coloring some of my feelings about it.
But we also have Bandag right around the corner there. It's a tire, it's a tire zone over there. It has been for a long time.
All right, I guess if there's no other discussion, I guess we'll entertain a motion.
I would move that we table this to give the applicant a chance to sort of smooth away with the Commissioners. I just think it would be time well spent.
Okay.
And if I don't get a second, that's fine.
Have a motion to table to have a second. I'll second. Those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay.
Was that a three zero or three two?
So this will be back on the March, against the N S O.
Okay.
It'll, it'll be on the next planning commission agenda. Uh, no, that's the Board of Commissioners, theirs is the twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Twenty-eighth?
Let me confirm that, um, the twenty-eighth, March twenty-eighth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you need Commissioner Flowers Taylor's contact information, I'll be glad to give that to you. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we've got, the next item on the agenda is S D twenty-two ten Spaulding Village Vineyard, excuse me, one twenty LLC owner, eleven forty-three Vineyard Road, approximately one hundred and twenty acres located in Land Lot Zero thirty-eight of the third land district, consider the approval of a preliminary plat for Glazier Farms. Applicant is proposing a forty-eight light subdivision within R two single-family residential district. So, is this the, our staff here that's gonna give this report?
Mm-hmm. All right, so this property was rezoned from A R one agricultural residential to R two, a single-family district. And it was approved with a special exemption on May twenty-six, twenty twenty-two. A variance was also given to them on November twenty-third of twenty twenty-one to extend the cul-de-sac and be, beyond the limit of thirty linear feet. They have complied with, with what we require for a preliminary plat with a few issues that came up from the health department. If you look under Sewerage, the pre-development review was completed by Spaulding County Health Department, and it was determined that the following lots contained areas of questionable or unsuitable soil for a conventional system. Lots fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-nine, thirty-two, and forty-five. And also during that review was also determined that the following lots contain preliminary questionable, questionable and unsuitable soil, lots one, two, twenty-two, twenty-eight, thirty-one, thirty-three, thirty-four, and forty-four. Based on that, the health department is asking for a level three soil study that must be provided before a final plat is satisfied. And so that has been included with the staff recommendations for this case as well as other requirements that we have listed under staff recommendations.
So we actually won't have a plat to look at until they make the ruling on the soil, is that correct?
We do have a preliminary plat, if Ms. Susan can go to the agenda at the bottom. Right next to it.
But those lights in question are still on there, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Any comment from up here?
How about comments from you, Newton?
I don't, Eva did this report, and she's been in touch with the health department on the lots. And, um, she, she's more versed on this, on this one. I protected her from the masses tonight, but-
Yes. And I appreciate that.
But she's, she's got this one.
It, it seems to me that this was what you've, which you've let us know here, is that this is self-regulating. If they do the studies and they're incompatible, as we believe they might well be, then they can't develop them anyway.
That is correct.
It's self-managing-
Yes.
With these conditions from South, so staff, so I, I don't see that there's any danger to the community or any negative influence with the general overall area or for the county, or any liability, I'll leave that to you, but liability to the county in the circumstances. They can't build them, they can't realize their highest and best use because the soil itself is what is their enemy, not us or the Commissioners.
Correct, and thankfully, we have a very good communication system with the Environmental Health Office. So she, we have been in constant communication throughout the whole process. So, if something does come up and it's marked as unbuildable for some reason, she will let us know.
And if the lots can't accept a septic, then they'll have to redo the plat anyway.
Correct.
Right.
And bring it back.
So it's all just sort of self-managing, and, and the applicant is- is aware and-
Yes.
And, and comfortable and compliant.
Correct.
So I don't see a reason not to move forward.
All right, well, if that's the case, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, conditional approval based on staff recommendations.
Okay, you'll have a second?
I'll second that.
Second, all in favor signify by raising your right hand. It's unanimous. And now we've reached the favorite point of the meeting here.
Yes.
The adjournment.
The minutes.
I'm just gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes. Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Those in favor signify or raise your right hand, yes, you know. All right.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Well, we're not here, so I don't have a second.
No Commissioner comments?
No, we're, we're commented out enough tonight.
Unless y'all just have to, I would like to compliment staff on the remarkable job that they are doing under the circumstances.
Yeah, I do want to take the time to thank Newton for all his help, I honestly would not have been able to do it without him. So, Newton, thank you so much.
Thank you, Newton.
But we, we, we're, we're finally moving forward.
Newton's a stand-up guy.
What's it looking like to get you, uh, uh, staff and a boss and stuff?
We, if it's okay, I think it's good. Um, we do have a new director that has been hired, and he will start on March fourteenth. Um, he, his name is Mr. Jeremy Gilbert. Um, he does come from Pike County.
And before that, Henry.
And before that, Henry.
So he is, I've worked with, I've worked with Jeremy on the developer side, and, uh, I have found him to be fair and, um, similar to what Chad used to say, Chad used to say he calls balls and strikes.
Right, and a meeting with him today, um, with the E P D, he, he was well-versed, and I think we're, we're gonna be in good hands.
Eva, I got the sense that you know more about the E P D regs than the-
I'm, I'm taking Lisa's-
That was, that was a learning experience for them, I think, more or less.
John, I, I make a motion, that we adjourn?
We, we adjourn, I'm sorry.